Good evening. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Protem Teeter. Councilmember Madera. Councilmember Frank. Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Douglas.
Present.
Councilmember Hughesman.
Present.
Councilmember Elliott.
Present.
Councilmember Juariola.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. For the record, we're all here except for Mr. Teeter. I'd like to ask for a motion to allow him, since he's out of town, to have an excused absence.
So moved.
Mr. Douglas moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Diaz, second. Is this not working? Anybody pushing their buttons?
It's not flashing.
Alright, then you're going to have to, uh, tonight, you're going to have to get my attention so that I know you have something to say, okay? Alright, I have a motion, a second, to excuse Councilmember Teeter from tonight's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If you want to give me just a second, let's see, we thought we had that resolved, but if you want to give me just a second. Okay, let's try your request to speak buttons now, please.
Yep, they're kicking on now.
Alright, good, thank you.
Alright, yeah, go ahead and turn them off. I don't need them all on. At least we know they work. Alright, thank you, Laura. Alright, next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, but before I have you all stand, normally I do a moment of silence. We've had a little bit of a break because all the different holidays that happened at the end of December and first part of January, and we had an Adams County deputy get killed in the line of duty, Deputy Gum. Funeral was this last weekend. Also, tonight, a deputy in El Paso County was shot and killed as well. You have a lot of men and women standing at the back of this room that take their job seriously, and they don't get paid near enough for what the harms way, harm, harm they put themselves in way of. I want to make sure during our moment of silence, you think about deputies' families that are grieving over the loss, and also think about the harm that our officers put themselves in every day to make sure that we protect. They protect us and our community, and I want to make sure that they know how much they are appreciated by me and the rest of this council and by our community. So when you see one of those officers on the street, please stop and tell them thank you, alright? Please stand and join me in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, I'd ask that the staff pass the microphone around and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
George Maxey.
Thank you.
Tilly Villarreal.
Jean Tappy Smith.
Mike Smith.
Bruce Emery.
Carol Emery.
Carly Seller.
Charlie Shufflin, Police Department.
Hamid Boemu, Police Department.
Clint Nichols, Police Department.
Harold Chapman, Police Department.
Greg Sadar, Police Department.
Dan McCoy, Police Department.
Michael Kim, Police Department.
Jolene Krebs, Police Department.
Brian Trahill, Police Department.
DJ Thompson, Police Department.
Kelly Hamilton, Police Department.
Tom Boskovich, Police Department.
Travis Fender, Police Department.
Robert Renfro, Police Department.
Ken Evans, Police Department.
Dennis Moon, Police Department.
Mike Pasco, Police Department.
Rob McCoy, Police Department.
Rachel Patel, Police Department.
Amanda Schreiner, Police Department.
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources.
Delilah Collins.
Cheryl Kirstens, Finance.
Patrick Buckley, Community Development.
Rich Rodriguez, Police Department.
Amanda Rodriguez.
Dennis Davo, Department.
Stacy Galvo, Police Department, Victim Services.
Jim Anderson, Finance.
Armando Juariola, Finance.
Carolyn Keith, Parks Recreation and Golf.
Maria DeAndre, Public Works.
Susan Carvahal, Kit Kat.
Daniela Villarreal, Community Liaison.
Bruce Riley, Senior Commission.
Thank you all for being here tonight. When we get our agenda started, we start with proclamations and recognitions. We'll start with the 2017 National Night Out Award Recognition. I'd like to invite Chief Nichols forward to talk about the award.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for having us up here today, and I appreciate the kind words to both me and my staff and the profession as a whole. Very well received, thank you. So a little bit of background, the National Association of Town Watch introduced the National Night Out program in 1984 through an already established network of law enforcement agencies, neighborhood watch groups, civic groups, state and regional crime prevention associations, and volunteers across the nation. The first annual National Night Out involved 2.5 million neighbors across 400 communities in 23 states. Soon, the event grew to celebration beyond the front porch vigils. Neighbors across the nation began to host block parties, festivals, parades, cookouts, and various other community events with safety demonstrations, seminars, youth events, visits from emergency personnel, and much, much more. Thirty-eight million neighbors in 16,000 communities across the nation take part in National Night Out annually. The National Awards Program honors registered communities for participation in the National Night Out campaign and compete with communities of similar populations across the nation. In 2017, the Commerce City Police Department submitted the document and plan and was awarded 19th place overall in the 50,000 to 100,000 population group, and in the state of Colorado, we took first place. And I believe you have a plaque that was awarded to Commerce City Police Department.
I do, I'm going to be bringing it down.
And I got to tell you, this was a very proud feat, not only for the organization but for the community as a whole. For most of the groups that came out to partner with us for National Night Out, some of those Commerce City resident neighborhood groups drew upwards of 300, 400 people, probably some of the biggest groups we've seen in a long time, particularly since they weren't mad at the police at that point, so we were pretty happy about that.
Well, thank you very much. It's extremely important that we participate in these kind of things so that our community and our residents are engaging and involved with our officers, not only when something's not right, but on a daily basis, they have a comfort zone of, of the folks that they have to work with when times are bad. So, thank you to you and all of your officers and, and the folks in the PD that helped make this happen. I would like to ask the council to please join me down front to present this plaque to the Chief of Police for first place, and I know that's a collective effort to get us there.
Absolutely.
the newly appointed sergeant's recognition.
Absolutely. This is something I am extremely proud of. Again, something that I am extremely proud of. In August of 2017, Commerce City Police Department posted an internal announcement for police sergeant. It was a very competitive process. It included a written examination that included four books off of a reading list, questions over police and city policies, and participation in an assessment center. So to say that it was challenging was not giving it its due justice. The assessment center used an out-of-county assessors to evaluate answers in a structured interview, and the assessors looked for competencies in oral communication, planning, and organizing, tactical knowledge, problem analysis, and judgment as it related to community issues, police operations, supervisory, and leadership knowledge. Again, the testing process was extremely challenging and resulted in the selection of the top four candidates for promotion to the rank of police sergeant. The department is extremely proud of the hard work demonstrated by these officers during the testing process and look forward to the contributions these new supervisors will make to improve the quality of life and safety for Commerce City residents. And so, without further ado, I'd like to invite the three of the four sergeants up, one's on vacation. Sergeant Tom Boskovich, Sergeant Brian Trahillio, Sergeant Travis Fender, and Sergeant Jeremy Jenkins couldn't be denied.
I want to invite the council down again to take another picture, but I have to say, it's really nice to see a new positive vibe coming out of the police department. I don't say that enough, but I talked to enough of the officers and the community, and, and you get a sense that things are going the right direction now. And I, I owe a lot of that to Chief Nichols. I know he's doing a great job, but I know it works from the to, the bottom up, so thanks to the FOP and the officers for working together, strategizing to make Commerce City a better place to be a police officer. So, thank you. Alright, guys, come on down. Award Recognition. Cheryl, go ahead. Floor's yours.
I think you have two awards in front of you, so I want to take the opportunity to recognize my staff that's with me here tonight. Armando Juariola is the city controller, and Jim Anderson is our tax manager. In addition to them being here tonight for this recognition, I also want to recognize and thank my entire finance staff. Without the contributions they each make on a daily basis, awards like these would not be possible. We have been working very hard in the last few years to increase our communication, education, and transparency to the citizens. We're very proud of that work, and we're really grateful that the GFOA or Government Finance Officers Association recognized us, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of all of you this evening.
I appreciate it, and you know what? You, you give your staff a ton of credit, which I'm sure they are deserving, but we also know you're a part of that team, and, and so the entire team, and Cheryl with you, leading that team, you have been extremely successful. And I know you're part of the city organization that is back in a wing in City Hall that most people never see, but it's, the, the work that you do is extremely important to make sure we're investing in the right places, we're following all the protocols, and that we are transparent for our residents. And that's, that's a very important piece, because we couldn't be effective at what we do if you guys weren't doing your job and being effective at what you do. And I am proud to be able to come down and hand you these two awards. One is, uh, let me pull them up here real quick so I can tell you exactly what they're for. Outstanding Achievement in the Popular Annual Financial Reporting, and the other one is a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So, thank you to the entire team, including yourself, Cheryl, in the finance department. So if the council will please join me down front, yeah, once again. citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the city council on businesses and affairs of the city. The city council is unable to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. Please give your name and address for the record, and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. Alright, I have two people that have signed up this evening to speak during the citizen communication. I'll start with Susan Carvahal.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and guests. I am Susan Carvahal, a longtime resident of Commerce City. Tonight, I am here to thank and commend our South Adams County Fire Department, in particular, one wonderful fire chief, Randall Wilgum. I'd like to tell you about something that my husband and I experienced recently. About a month ago, while in a leadership Commerce City outing, I was discussing safety with Fireman Randall, and he offered to have someone from the fire department come and install smoke detectors and a carbon monoxide monitor in our home at no cost. The following Monday, Chief Randall showed up, personally installed not one or two, but six, smoke alarms and a carbon monoxide monitor. He showed my husband and I how to test and use these devices. Words cannot describe how grateful we are for this generous service. As embarrassed as I am to say this, we have never replaced our one smoke alarm when the batteries went out, and that was over 25 years ago. And I am, by the grace of God, we have never had a fire. Now, we are feeling very safe. Thank you, South Adams County Fire Department and Chief Randall. I encourage any citizen who is not protected with smoke alarms or carbon monoxide monitors to please contact our fire department. I wanted council to know that we are so very thankful and grateful, and that our city is truly protected by a caring, dedicated, and committed fire department.
Wonderful story. Thank you for coming in tonight and sharing that, because a lot of times, they don't get credit where credits do. So we'll make sure they, they know you were here.
Thank you.
I'm going to try not to butcher this. Carly? Come on up. Great. Good evening.
I'm Carly Seller. I live in Buffalo Mesa, and the first thing I wanted to do is, there's going to be an open house in this room on February the 17th. It's going to be hosted by our representatives Benavides and Michael, Michelson Janey, and Senator Dominic Moreno, and they'll bring information about what's going on in the state legislation, our state income taxes, how that's going to change, just different topics. If you've never attended one of their meetings, I would encourage anyone to do so, because they're, they're just full of information, and it's really a good chance to ask questions. And I'll leave these on the back so people can pick them up if they're interested. The reason, though, that I really came tonight is, I live in Buffalo Mesa, and I'm on an app called Nextdoor. I'm sure all of you are familiar with it. That thing just blew up this weekend because most of us got our tax bills for our property taxes. In my neighborhood of Buffalo Mesa, most of our taxes went up between $600 and $800 for next year. So, I moved into my house in 2011, I'm sorry, 2006, and my proposed tax bill at the time I moved in was $2,600. I actually wound up paying taxes initially at $3,200. So, from 2006 to current, my taxes have risen from about $3,200 a year to $4,400 a year. I understand that I'm one of the lucky ones, that my tax bill actually increased very insignificantly compared to some of my other neighbors. People over in Reunion were saying that their tax bills went up from, to like $2,600 a year, $2,800 a year, and as much as $3,200 a year. And my question is, and I've always known I was in a special tax district, but I don't think I really understood until these last few weeks, the scope of what that is. And what I understand is that in Buffalo Mesa, they refinanced our special tax bill, and so going forward, we have 19 years to pay off $513,000. So, my question is, why weren't we notified earlier that that could be refinanced, and when the tax, or the interest rates lowered in about 2012, why weren't we given an opportunity then to try and lower that amount of money? It could have saved a significant amount on our tax bills, and it would have been, I think, a very responsible thing to do. So, I mean, over the years, I have gone to the assessors' office probably two or three times and never really understood the scope of being in a special tax district. So that's my question. Why couldn't it have been financed at an earlier time?
Well, those, those special districts operate as their own government, not under the, under the government of the city, so it's not something that we have control of. It's like your HOA. They make decisions on, on behalf of the residency there. I don't know what the protocols are and what their regulations are to notify residents other than their neighborhood meetings and stuff like that. I would lean on our attorney to maybe add more to that.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Yes, the Metropolitan District are special districts that are organized for the purpose of financing infrastructure in those neighborhoods when they're created, are separate governments. More information could be found through the Special District Association, and you could identify which identify which district you live in and who the contact information is there. And it would have information, I believe, on when you would be notified and how you could obtain a seat on the board for those districts because many of them are boards controlled by residents of the district.
Thank you.
I've actually done that just in the last few weeks. But I guess if I had understood earlier, I would have taken a more proactive approach
Sure.
a long time ago. So the city had nothing to do with setting those up initially or accounting.
The original ones, we require them to put in the public infrastructure. So they set their mill rates based on the type of infrastructure they want. So you take a Buffalo Mesa that's mostly roads, maybe some parks. You tie that to or compare that to a reunion that has a rec center within their district. They are going to be significantly different based on the amount of money that they were borrowing against the community and what those payments are going to be. But that is different for each subdivision that has a metro district. Some have metro districts, some have metro districts and HOAs, and some only have HOAs. So it's important that people moving into those areas research to what those taxes are. We have several other special districts in Commerce City. One of them, of course, you got the school district, but and you've got the fire district because Commerce City doesn't have a fire district within the city government. We don't have a water district within the city government. So even our water district is a separate government entity that operates as a special district. And if they choose to increase or refinance debt or increase your fees, that is not a function of this council, nor would it be with a special district as a metro district. If they decide to refinance or do something different, that has to be done through the people within that organization. So all I could tell you is that the people that live in these metro districts and HOAs should get involved and know who and what is going on within their communities. So we have people that pay different taxes throughout our community, but everybody pays the same city portion property tax within the community. But I'll get people that say, oh, it's so much more expensive to live where I do than where you do. Well, it has to do with what debt has occurred and incurred and what services are provided within that district. If you need more detailed information, I'm sure you can reach out through the city manager's office to the proper folks. But we can really only help you so much with our city tax stuff. But the county assessor's another one. But you really have to look into some of these special district governments, like your metro districts, the water district, the school district.
Yeah, I just wish I had known a little bit more earlier because when I went to the assessor's office, which in my previous homeowner's experience, that's where you got your tax information about your property taxes, I just wasn't told that that was still yet a different district or something outside of that. I was just told it was special. So I didn't know to separate it or I wasn't advised to go look for information elsewhere. So I guess it's just for information.
It should be broke out on your tax bill, too. It is, isn't it? What?
It's broken out, but it's not in contact so-and-so with the special tax district.
And then, you know, you also have the opportunity to, once the assessor, once they assess your property, you have a certain amount of time to go in.
Yeah, and I've actually done that. I've done that on two occasions, and both times they were very nice. They lowered the assessment on the house, but the mill levies went up, so it didn't really impact my actual tax bill.
Right.
So it's, I guess, you know, this has been a big learning experience, but just FYI, that app was just blowing up this weekend with people going over that. And the other thing I'll give you as an FYI, the 27J school district, the proposal to go to a four-day school week, that's really got a lot of people concerned, too.
It sure does.
Yeah.
It sure does.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
But we appreciate you coming in, and if the city can give you any help or direction, we're there.
I'll put these on the back table if anyone's interested.
Thank you. Mr. Hughesman, you have a comment?
Ma'am? Ma'am? I want to do one, thank you for coming in and talking about special districts. As you said, this is a huge issue, especially for everybody up north. But in reference to your question about why they didn't refinance back in 2012, I know in our district, we weren't able to refinance until this year because the valuation was not enough in order to secure that financing. So I would suspect that the same thing occurred on your side of 104th Avenue where you didn't have the valuation capable to secure the bonds or to secure the bank financing that they wanted to go after. And this year, with the increase in valuation, it's allowed a lot of districts to go out there and seek additional financing in order to do that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move into approval of the minutes of the minutes of December 4th, 2017. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Douglas.
So moved.
Mr. Wadiola.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Minutes of November 20th, 2017. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Diaz.
Seven.
Councilwoman Nicole Frank.
Seven.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We have the minutes of the organizational meeting of December 4th, 2017. I'm open for a motion and a second to approve the minutes of that organizational meeting. Councilwoman Elliott.
Seven.
Mr. Hughesman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And we move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are four items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on this council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further Saying none. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Mr. Douglas.
As seated.
Mr. Hughesman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the title? Titles.
Ordinance 2150 and ordinance amending section 5-4500 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to Adopt the 2017 National Electric Code and Repealing and Reenacting Sections of the 2006 International Code Council Electrical Administrative Provisions. Resolution 2018-02, Resolution Increasing Contract Authorization for the Bison Ridge Recreation Center Project. Resolution 2018-03, Resolution Approving Award of Second Amendment to Contract for Eagle Point Construction Services Work Package II. Resolution 2018-04, Resolution Approving an Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the E-470 Public Highway Authority Regarding Funding Related to Tower Road-Pena Boulevard Interchange.
Great, thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, consent agenda has been approved unanimously. Eight in favor, one excused absence. Now we'll move on to presentations. Tonight's our presentation night for six months of council, it looks like. We're going to start out with the senior commission update. I would invite Commission President Riley forward to present the update. And good evening.
We were looking for the clicker.
The clicker. I don't know, you better check the attorney's pockets.
Got to pick on somebody, you know?
No clicker.
Okay, I'll just, Daniella will take care of it for me. So Commerce City Senior Commission. The council put an ordinance together, number 2128, that outlined the powers, composition, and terms of a quorum. Then they followed that once that was in place, and they determined that we should have a senior commission. We, they put together a resolution to appoint members to the commission and establish terms. So we're on a rotating basis, just like the council. Some serve one year, some serve two or three. So that's how this whole thing got started because of the need, and we're moving forward with that. Next. The commission overview. Our job is to advise the city council on matters that relate to older adults and the senior community. We want to foster greater understanding of senior citizens. We want to encourage greater senior citizen participation in our community and on community issues. We want to inform the community available services. And I want to add a piece there. We don't just want to inform the community, we don't just want to inform seniors, we want to inform seniors and other adults because many of you have parents that might require senior services someday or special services. So you need to know what's available also as far as services and resources for your senior parents someday. Our other thing is to inform the community, oh, we did that one. Advocate for issues of importance to older adults. Older adults have special things that are different. Oh, you found something. Woo-hoo.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So the senior commission, oh, advance. Come on. There we go. The senior commission was appointed by the city council. We cover a wide range of the city issues, and we're supposed to be an advisory group for the council. The other half of that is something that already existed, and that's the Parks and Recreation and Golf Senior Advisory Committee. They're not a commission, they're a committee, a little bit different. The department selects them. They weren't necessarily appointed by the council. They weren't selected that way. They were selected by people in that department. They give input on rec programs and services, and they work in an advisory capacity to do that. You can see there are nine members on the left that are from the community, chairman, vice chairman, and members at large. And then there are two alternate members. In case somebody can't fulfill their duties, we have two people lined up that are willing to step in and take a space when needed. There are two council members on the committee, on the commission, excuse me, don't mix those words up. Councilwoman Mary Protem, Rick Teeter, and Councilman Paulo Diaz. Then we have a representative that's an ex-official member, Robert Sheets from Adams County, and he deals with senior resources in the county, and Jennifer Pepper from the Senior Hub, she's also ex-official. And then Michelle Halsted, who is a staff member here in the city, is also there as an ex-official member to give us additional input that we may need. Our staff liaison is Daniella Vareal, and she is at every one of our meetings and works with us to make sure that we get everything done that we need to get done and try to help me keep everybody on track. Next. There we go. What we've been doing so far, we started in September, so we're not a very new commission. We've got a few meetings under our belt, and one of them was during the holidays, so that made it a little bit tougher to get things done. But so far, we're spending most of our time trying to gather information from places like the Denver Regional Council Governments, the Senior Hub, from Adams County, from the city's community survey that was done, and from neighboring senior commissions and organizations, Thornton, Brighton, et cetera, to see what they're already doing because they already had commissions in place. So there's a lot more to be done. We're just getting started. We've only scratched the surface in what needs to be done for seniors. So we've identified a bunch of issues that we sat and said, these are things that we came up with. So we just did a big brainstorming list. Brainstorming list includes aging population increase. Our population is growing older. Yes, we've got a lot of young families that are moving in up north, but there's half of our community that just continues to grow older. And we want to make sure that we're keeping that in mind as we look at senior efforts. We want to make sure there's safety for seniors. Seniors have a concern for that. They don't want to feel like it's an unsafe community to live in, an unsafe area to live in. So we want to make sure we've got that covered. And we've got a great police department that does things like that, helps with us. We will spend more time with them, probably, so we can focus on where the seniors are located and what we can do to help them with safety issues. Transportation, a lot of seniors don't drive anymore. So how do they get places? There are some services out there, and we want to make sure seniors are aware of those services that can help with that. Use of technology, let's face it, we're just, my age, just at the brim of kind of knowing a little bit about technology, enough to get ourselves in trouble. But most seniors, a lot of seniors, don't use a computer. They don't have a smartphone. You know, they got the old flip phones still, if they even have one, a cellphone. So we want to be able to help them learn how to use some of that technology and provide services that'll do that. Defensive driving, if they are driving still. Some seniors aren't driving, but others are. And we want to, we've identified that that's an area that we want to make sure happens in the city, that we work with organizations that can provide defensive driving education for seniors, classes, whatever it takes. We want seniors to be able to age well in place independently. Let's age at home, let's not have to go into a facility, as long as they can. Assistant every day to do things. They can't always mow their lawn, they're not capable anymore, or trim the bushes, or do some touch-up on their house, whatever, a plumber. And they don't know who to call, so we want to make sure that we include that in some of our things that we've identified. Affordable housing and access to housing. A lot of seniors are getting run out of their houses because of issues like taxes going up so high. They can't afford that. So what can we do? How can we lock that in place? I learned a program this year that when you turn 65, at the beginning of the year, you can go in and apply for a tax exemption that holds your tax rate steady. Now, I'm not sure that takes care of all the little mills and all those things, but at least the basic rate is locked in place. It can't be raised. So that's available through Adams County. So that's something we want to inform people of, so they can take advantage of that. That will help them. We want to provide information, we want to communicate leading, communication leading to actionable knowledge. How can we get them, our seniors, to understand what's out there and then put it into practice? So that's something that's a high priority for us. Senior activities, physical, educational activities, and involvement in both city recreation centers. We've got two now. So the seniors up north have no excuse not to be involved in some senior physical activity programs because we're going to have another facility that's close enough to them, they don't have to drive all the way down here. Some of them, that's an issue, to drive that far. And so now we're covering that. Our city has made a great stride to help provide that for seniors. That's going to be a good thing. Isolation, trying to find ways that, how can we not have somebody sit in the house all day long by themselves and never communicate with anybody else? Maybe they can't get up, they can't get out of the house, whatever it is. How do we encourage neighbors to become more of a neighborhood like the old days, especially when there's a senior involved? Let's Let's, let's find ways to tie them in and, and let them know that they're not there by themselves. We're all around, and you need something, give me a call. I'll come over and help. Community involvement where they can, get involved in some community activities. Realize that there's a relevance of having seniors within our community. We need all age groups. It's important in society to have seniors through little kids interacting with each other. It's, it's a necessary thing, because we learn from seniors, they've got a lot of wisdom over the years. And then, get them involved in participating in activities that we have here in the city. So, we recognize the need, some of these kind of say the similar type of thing, but we want to do things that, where we get involved and continue to learn about the challenges and opportunities that face seniors. We want to have a broader information sharing, available on programs and services, events and activities that engage seniors, and create a sense of community. Advocacy at the state and federal level, where we go and we present our, our needs, our case for seniors. Strategic planning to keep seniors' voice and concerns in the forefront, so they don't get shoved behind, because all the younger people have taken over. Upcoming events and dates, we are doing a Commerce City tour in the very near future, where we're going to go around the city and see what's here, so we begin to learn what services are already available. We're going to do the same thing, we're going to go to Adams County Building, because they provide a lot of services for seniors. So, our meeting actually this week, on Thursday, we're meeting over there, so that we get a better picture of where that's at, and how we can refer people to, to the, to the county for assistance. We're going to Senior Day at the State Capitol, and we're, we've got members of our committee that, our commission that are attending that. Adams County Aging Network Conference is coming up too, and we hope to have several of us at that. Do you have questions that I might or might not be able to answer yet, being that we're only four meetings in?
Does the council have any questions at this time? I do have one comment. I just wanted to make sure that your group knows that we do a senior property tax rebate for the City of Commerce City.
Good.
And you can, we rebate up to a hundred percent of a senior's property tax, city portion. You just have to file, file the paperwork and make application, but it would be great.
What's it based on?
It would be great. We've done that for years.
Yeah, what's it?
Problem, problem is, we need to make sure that the organization, like the Senior Commission, can get those documents and make sure they're readily available for seniors that you're interacting with, to be able to apply for that tax rebate. But, it is up to a hundred percent of your city portion property tax, which would make a difference in some people's lives.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Thank you. That's great to know.
Yeah, when you start talking about different opportunities, I know that's one we put into place probably twenty years ago.
Nice. And we've got to make sure more people know about it.
Yeah, absolutely. Anybody else have anything? Keep doing what you're doing.
Okay.
We look forward to your next update. I know you just got started, but we're looking for some great things to come out of the Senior Commission, make sure that our seniors are, have, have a voice here within the community.
Right.
So, thank you again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, next up, Historical Society. I'd like to invite the Board of Directors of this Historical Society forward to give their presentation. This is going to be interesting, having him out there instead of up here.
Do what?
It's going to be interesting having him down there instead of up here.
Yeah, he's handing stuff out for us.
I'm going to have to listen, listen to him from a different perspective, I guess.
Yeah, it is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Deborah Bollock, sixty-one thirty Ivanhoe Street.
Good evening, I'm Esther Hall, I'm president of the Historical, seventy-two hundred East Seventy-Fifth Avenue, here in Commerce City.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Sheila Harris. I'm membership director at the Historical Society, sixty-six hundred East Seventy-Eighth Way, Commerce City.
Good evening.
Okay, do we, oh, we, how do I do this? I forgot. The red button?
Whatever you do, don't push the red button.
Don't push the red button.
Okay. Well, we are happy to be here, we would like to give you an overview of our year for two thousand seventeen, and we'll try to go fast, because we have a lot of slides on this PowerPoint. So, our current board members are Esther Hall, she's president, she's just introduced herself. Our vice president Pam Meyer is not able to be here tonight, myself, Deborah Bollock, I'm the secretary and treasurer. Our historian position is vacant, she resigned about six months ago, and membership director Sheila Harris. Our monthly board meetings are the second Monday of every month, at six P.M., and anyone is welcome, and we have those at our museum on sixty-fifth, sixty-five oh five East Sixtieth Avenue. We also have advisory board members, Joanne Stevenson, Casey Hayes, Thel McCall, Steven Kreitzer, Janet Union, Valerie Medina, and we have one more. Claudia? No, no, Claudia's not, not yet. Our members, at this point, we have a hundred and sixty members, and every year, we keep growing, so that is a good sign. We have different membership levels, we have individual, family, business, senior lifetime, and lifetime members. And for the new council members, the city was one of our first lifetime members, which means they just pay one time, a one-time fee, and they were the, one of the first ones. Our hours are open Monday through Saturday, ten to two, or by appointment. We do a lot of tours by appointment. If people can't come between ten and two, and they call us, we arrange to have them meet us there, and we will give them a tour. So, anybody with special groups, or just a family, this last Saturday, we had Al Crowe's family come, he's the first mayor of Commerce City, and his grandchildren, and great-grandchildren came to the museum, so it was great. We had about seven, fourteen people, it was good. Our visitors to the museum, from October two thousand sixteen to October two thousand seventeen, was four hundred and sixty-five members. Last year, we had four hundred and twelve, so we're growing with members as well, stopping by. Our income sources continue to be memberships, it's probably one of our biggest sources of income that we bring in, and Sheila does a great job as a membership director. We also have grants, we have donations from businesses and personal, which we've had quite a few this year, and then, we do a couple fundraisers. So, this helps us stay in business, and it keeps the museum running. Our expenses continue to be our exhibit expenses, putting exhibits together, our lease, our utilities, the programs and events that we do, and our office supplies and any marketing that we do for the Historical Society. Our partnerships are the City of Commerce City, we thank you for everything that you do for us, we're grateful of this partnership. Adams fourteen School District, School District twenty-seven J, we do a coloring book every year, and both of the school districts get the coloring books for the second graders. The Stout Street Foundation, we have a great partnership with them, they do help us do things, they'll send guys over to help us clean up, or move things when we need it. The South Adams County Fire Department, the Police Department, our Savior Lutheran Church, if we need a place to hold something big enough for space, they always let us use their areas. And many of the city nonprofits are also partners with us. And I'll let Esther talk about our displays.
Well, if you haven't come to see our displays that are up, they're changing, ever-changing, and with hopes that more and more people will come and see it, because it is the history of where we all live and we represent. So, the first is the Fire Department, started in nineteen forty-two. Great history there with the Fire Department, and then, there's also the display at the New Fire Station, just outside of, of the New Fire Station. We have the Water Department, this is new and growing, we've just enlarged, because we've gotten a lot more of the information from the Water Department, and they're very helpful with keeping us up to date with changes. The Trout and Hog Farm history, very interesting, extremely interesting. We even do yearly workshops on those, because of the history of the pig farms and the fish farms. We have a lot of older items that many of us might remember our mothers doing, our grandmothers washing clothes on ring or washing machines, old-school desks. We have our first hundred-year display, we applied for a grant, and so, for the first hundred years of Derby in Commerce City area, it was a twenty-six thousand dollar grant that we got, to do accurate history of our city as we have it now. We have a lot of book binding and newspaper bindings, and we try to do two a year, anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars, to have each one done, so a lot of history. In paper, it's history, on computers, it's data entry, and sometimes, it's wrong, we know these things are correct. So, we have a great library and a full encyclopedia, too. So, it's, it's, and we add to it each year. We have the Sand Creek Regional Greenway, that's a new one that came up this summer. The people from Sand Creek did a wonderful job putting this display together, and so, we really enjoy showing that. And of course, the charter convention of all of the past charter members of the city that helped put our city together. Then, we have Time magazines from nineteen twenty-six forward, those were donated to us, and we have those on display. We have a lot of very old dolls, vintage clothing, very nice, beautiful vintage clothing from mid fif, eighteen hundreds, including shoes and hats and different types of garments that they wore a hundred and fifty years ago. So, that's really interesting, I think. We do a great telephone history, we love educating students, we have phones on loan from Abilene Kansas Museum, and so, we can display those phones and educate the students. A great canning display of what used to be done, and, and many people still do that. Military history, and people that lived in this area donated some of their military uniforms from long ago. And of course, the Adam City High School signs that we took off of fences and off of buildings, but people that went to school at Adam City really enjoy going to see our whole Adam City history area.
Thank them for the Derby sign.
And we thank you for the Derby tires sign, we've got that now, and we just need to get a few more letterings. And then, we have a lot of off-site exhibits. We have it at Woodridge Care Center, which they really enjoy. Allsup Elementary, of course, we did Mr. Allsup there. Adam City Middle School, they don't want it taken down, it's done so well. Wells Fargo, High Low Check Cashing, they, they have their information in there of the Derby, local Derby area, that's really interesting. Key Bank, of course, located just for Key Bank. So, we're, we're working on more displays at both of the new rec centers. So, that is some of the things that we love to change periodically, we don't want it old and boring, but people comment on how well they enjoy seeing them. Thank you. Now, Sheila.
Okay, and we're going to go into the programs. We do the history coloring book and distribution to all the second graders within the two districts, twenty-seven J and fourteen. We're working on getting that done right now again, and adding to it. We also do a reading book distribution to all the third-grade classes in Adams fourteen in May. We have lots of history lectures, quarterly newsletters that come out, we do holiday giving programs, video histories, city bus tour with the leadership of Commerce City. We have a lot of events that we do also. We do the time-to-time luncheon, the Gene Klein Angel Awards. Esther puts together lots of yard sales, hopefully, that's going to stop.
It is.
And then, we do the Memorial Day Parade, we do the Pioneer Picnic at the museum, that's our anniversary picnic, and we also do the Christmas Bus Lights Tour.
And we do three bus trips to Central City this year.
Right. Right. Okay, and we have some other highlights that we're going to be doing. We have members and networking with other museums, Esther and Deborah go to meetings on that with the other museums, I can't. We have groundbreaking and grand openings, that we try to go to all of those and get information on those pictures, what have you, just so we could keep that history. We participated in community outreaches and other community events, visiting and establishing relationships with other museums. We worked with the South Adams County Fire Department for the history for the new headquarters, the building in July of seventeen. The groups visiting the museums, we have lots that come in for class reunions, organizations, business, and the Boys and Girls Club. We also did our first car show in September, it was lots of fun, we did that with our anniversary, and we do a lot of history lectures. These are just some pictures of the things that we've done throughout this, last year.
So, now, going into two thousand eighteen, did I go too far? Oh, no. Okay. We have a few goals. One of them is to help with the process of implementing the Historic Preservation Plan. So, as you all know, you've adopted this a couple years ago, and we know that it's been very busy to get this going, but this is something that I think is important to actually continue with this plan and, and do some of the things that are in it. We would like to add two new off-site displays, and one will be at Eagle Point Recreation Center, and one at Bison Ridge Recreation Center. So, when Bison Ridge opens, we're going to have a plan of how the Northern Range was developed, and we have some people helping us with that, so that should be a good, a good presentation. And then, history presentations to local businesses, we're actually inviting some large businesses either into our museum, or asking them if we can come to them and give them some presentations about the Historical Society. Saving Places is something we'd like to see down the road with the Dottie Baki House, to preserve that. Storage Building up on seventy-two fifty Highway Two, maybe proving some of the, the visual appearance of that building. And that could also be a possible future site of a preservation project, because that building is historic. And then, create an awareness of Commerce City museums. We do have, you know, a small area here, you've got the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, that has actually a little museum in there, it tells the whole history of the arsenal. We now have the Fire Department, which is right across the field here. We have our museum, and I think it would be nice to have some signage to, to tell the public that we have these places along Quebec and then along six and eighty-five, so that maybe we can get more people in the museum. We would like to hire an intern, and you have a letter, we have sent you a letter on what the purpose of that would be. We have met an intern who works for the City of Brighton. I wonder if she's here? Ah, she's here. Emma Lane, she's here tonight, and we would like to, when she's done in Brighton, have her come and help us. And she's done a great job in Brighton, scanning papers and organizing some of their displays, not putting a display out, but just keeping it organized. We do have a past-perfect software that will organize every contribution that we've had in the museum. in the museum and we, and we don't use it properly and we would like her to help us get that up and running. And that would be cataloging all of our items and giving us the technical assistance we need to do that. We are working on a fundraiser this year. So, Sheila mentioned that hopefully we don't have, have any more garage sales. We're, we're doing a fundraiser. It's a deck of cards. And in Wyoming, a museum made $30,000 doing this fundraiser. So, we're, we, we are planning on $10,000 and we're, we're doing them right now. We're having the prototypes made up. And what, what people do is they buy one card, they give us money for the card and their picture is on it or a picture of City Hall or whatever it is and then you have this whole deck of cards about Commerce City. And if we can sell a thousand decks, we'll make $10,000 and we think we can do that. And so, if we make $10,000 doing that, we won't have to have any more garage sales. So, we're hoping that we can accomplish that. We also wanna increase our membership by 10% and then improve, improve the signage around the museum, specifically east and west of the museum on Quebec Street and 6 and 85. The new displays that we wanna do this year is the Adams 14 Timeline from the very beginning. We have a lot of stuff from Adams 14, but we really wanna document the timeline from the very beginning. And we also wanna do a city council display of all the city councils that have sat on city council from 1952. So, that's every two years, you have a new council and we would like to capture that history. The Northern Range history is what we're gonna be putting in the new rec center up north. The Denver Pet Cemetery, there's a new owner of the Denver Pet Cemetery and they're, they are really trying to do some, some things there and try to possibly clean it up and we will help them do some of that and do a display on the pet cemetery. And then we also have stuff for the Commerce City Police Department, but we don't have a real thorough timeline and we would like to capture that this year. So, those will take us all year to, to complete. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You did have another board member just come in, if you'd like to have her come up.
We did. Oh, Pam. Oh, I didn't see you. Okay. You wanna introduce yourself?
I'm Pam Meyer. I'm vice president.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
You know, we, we always strive to, to make sure that the Historical Society is doing well. We want to preserve our history. You've done a great job. We still are looking forward to you trying to find that way to generate revenue, to be able to purchase some of the properties you wanna purchase and, and we're supportive. Would like to try to get through this process to get the historical preservation plan done, at least moving. So, we'll continue to work with you guys there. But it's always a pleasure to have you here and give us updates on how everything's going and where it's going. Every time I'm in Key Bank, I look at the display, every single time. So, it's, it's very interesting and growing up here, you know, you, you remember back to a lot of those things that, that someone moving here wouldn't remember some of those pieces. So, it's good for new people and, and good for those of us who grew up here because they can get a sense of what we were before and we can remember what we were before. Is there anyone on council that has anything they would like to say, comment or questions to the Historical Society? Jose Guardiola.
Yeah. When is the cards coming out or?
Probably April or May. Yeah, and, and we're waiting on a packet right now, which is gonna be a demo, a demo packet. And once we get that, we're gonna solicit people to see if they want to buy a card. And, you know, it has to be history related.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we don't want family pictures on the card or something like that, but something that's history related and we'll approve the pictures. And an example would be if you wanted to buy the Ace of Spades. The aces are expensive, they're like 250 bucks. So, we sell every card and that's what pays to make the cards. Then we have to sell them to make our money.
Okay.
So, that's how it works.
And if, oh, and if someone wanted to donate something to the museum, do they just go see you guys? Like an old time resident that has a bunch of stuff?
Yep, yep. Yeah, we take donations.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'd like to make one more comment. I go to a lot of different other cities that have museums, for the Anfram Museum. Nearly all of them have a signage museum and an arrow, just like we have the Wildlife Preserve on Highway 2. We really think that would make a difference if people are aware that Commerce City has a museum. Locals still do not know that we have a museum. I tell a lot of people. So, I think that would be helpful to us and to the public. So, my other input.
So, are you giving us a formal request for some directional signage to the museum?
Are you asking for some signs? So, yes.
I'll do another yard sale.
No, 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 no.
That's not quite where I was going.
No, no, no more yard sales.
Not quite where I was going. I was trying to help you out there.
Yes, we would like signs. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, here's the best advice I could give you is get somebody who is or has been familiar with the city, primarily like a former council member, and have them get a formal request for some directional signage in their spare time.
Okay.
And, and bring it in to, to the city council. And we'll see what we can do, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also would be interested in buying one of the cards when, when it's time.
You're on our list.
When it's time, put me on the list.
Yes, you're on our list.
I'd like to buy a card. And then for those folks that are watching at home or here in the audience, if you're not a member of the Historical Society, it's not very expensive and it is a, a great cause to preserve the history of our community, please consider that and these four, these four young ladies would help you with that membership.
We would.
Thank you, Shan.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in tonight.
You also have a flyer from the Anfram, American Front Range Museums. We're in there this year, we just wanted to point that out. So, that's a good, good, good thing that we did.
And nobody has a dog track, I mean, pet cemetery, I'm buying that card.
Do you have any questions for Emma Lane?
Does anybody have any questions?
From Brighton, about anything?
You know, I'd like her to come up and introduce herself at minimal so that we know who she is and kind of an idea of what an intern does if, if you don't mind. So that if it's something that we're gonna be considering in the future, we need to at least know what that entails. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Emma Lane. I'm at 3100 South Federal Boulevard in Denver. I've been working in Brighton for the past year on kind of the same stuff that I'd be doing here. So, at this point, I'm going to school for historic preservation, which will be nice for the city, but I've been working in museum studies. So, basically just setting up the collections program and stuff that these ladies have already mentioned, but, I mean, does anybody have any specific questions?
Anybody have any specific questions about Emma Lane? No? Just look forward to learning more about that position and, and the city's ability or inability to help.
Sure.
All right? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming in. Okay. We're gonna go to our next item, State of the Court. I'd like to invite Judge Juarez forward to give his presentation.
No.
Good evening.
Okay, don't press the red button, is that what I've been told? It should be on the top right. There you go. Okay, for the new city council members, I know that I met you at the swearing in, but I'm David Juarez. I've been the presiding municipal court judge here since 2003. I first started with an interim appointment at the end of six months, then I got the full appointment and it's continued since that date. About two years ago, I got made a part-time employee rather than an independent contractor. Also, I had backups when I was an independent contractor who would cover days when I would have conflicts. We now have two associate judges who serve as the backups, Tammy Bauer and Melissa Beato, who were both approved by the city council when my change happened and my former backup became a district court judge up in Adams County, Tommy Cressman. So, Tammy Bauer is the associate and then the other cover is Melissa Beato. And I've arranged a train and both of them sat during 2017 so that they're very familiar with the, the process that we use here and maintain a certain level of continuity. Obviously, each judicial officer is a little bit different. So, each of them has applied their own personality and experience to serving as a backup judge in Commerce City, but again, we try to have some continuity, I think, that has come as a result of the training that I provided to them. Each year, I come to before the city council and tell them what the state of the court is and I can honestly tell you the state of the court in 2017 is vastly improved over 2015 and 2016 and I'm very happy to say that. The annual report that you get is part of the packet. For those of you that have been on the city council before, you're kind of familiar with what the numbers are and what the totals are. I can tell you that our total revenue is significantly less in 2017 than it was at the, at the height of, of the use of the court of just a few short years ago, but I can tell you that the fourth quarter of 2017 and the first month of 2018 are trending up. We have been as high as about a million four in terms of total revenue. We've been over 8,000 in terms of total filings in the past. Those numbers are all down. The customers served at the counter have generally averaged about 10,000 a year. Our phone calls, again, we've been as high as 10,000 with phone calls in a year. 2017, it was lower. You see the attachments? We have reduced court dates starting in 2016 to match the reduced demand that we had in the court. 2018 is staying pretty steady for what 2017 was, but we anticipate 2019, if the current trend continues and the chief will, is, is doing what he can to increase that need, I would imagine then to 2019, we'll, we'll be back up to 2015 levels. All I can tell you is that we're a responsive organization. We only deal with the cases that get filed with the court. If the police file less cases, we have less demand. We adapted the court calendar to meet the demand that we had. If the cases continue to increase and they've been doing a great job in January this year, then we do have enough flexibility to increase the volume of people we see on the established calendar. And then in September of 2018, we'll see what the trend is and obviously begin to devise the calendar for 2019. The statistical report is there. It breaks down traffic tickets from the ordinance violations, the juvenile tickets that we get, the nature of the tickets. If, after going through those reports, you have any questions about any particular trends or any particular areas, I'm happy to address that. I can tell you that in the fall, no news to any of you, the traffic tickets for anyone trying to go north out of Commerce City were tremendously high because we had construction on Tower Road, we had construction on Highway 2, we had construction at I, Highway 85 at the interchange with 76, going north on Highway 85 from Northbound on 76. There was no way to get north out of Commerce City without going through a very active construction zone. For the safety of the workers and for our citizens, the police were very attuned to that and did their jobs and rode a lot of tickets and our fine revenue increased as a result for, for the periods that was there. Obviously, Tower Road is now open, the construction at 76 and Highway 85 interchange is completed, but Highway 2 continues to get a tremendous amount of activity there. The good news is we didn't see a very large increase in terms of accidents on Highway 2. Tower Road, we did. It was just unfortunate. Highway 85 at 76, again, not a tremendous increase in accidents there. The number one area in terms of accidents increase started in 2015. It's in the area of 56th Avenue and Highway 85. We've had directed patrols from the police there for speeding. We have seen a lot of increase in speeding tickets in 2015, but I haven't really seen a significant reduction in the number of accidents. That is just a very dangerous place right now in Commerce City. Part of it is probably as a result of the tremendous increase in the volume of traffic there. Later, there'll be another slide where we talk about the reconstruction of I-70 and what that's going to do to that area of Highway 85 near 56. I'm not looking forward to that reconstruction. Legislative changes. For those of you that have been on the city council before, you've heard me come in and I'll be candid, I've been whining tremendously about the legislative changes that have gone into effect, that have taken a really serious toll on the, on the municipal courts statewide. A lot of the legislative changes have required the courts to adapt and adopt a number of changes. First, on the board now, petition to seal adult dismissed cases. That went into effect on September 1st. That means that at the end of every case, when I'm sitting where the mayor is and the defendant is standing where I am, every dismissed case, it doesn't matter what caused it to be dismissed, whether it was a decision by the prosecutor, a plea bargain, a not guilty trial, successfully completing a diversion program, I have to give every single person an advisement that their dismissed case can be sealed. I ask them if they want to have their record sealed and then if they've been previously found indigent, I'll indicate to them that I'll make a note on the file that the petition filing fee is waived. If they're not, I explain to them that they'll have to secure the paperwork and information from my clerk to file the petition to seal and tell them that the filing fee as set by state statute is $65. We're gonna be dealing with that when we review the fee schedules a little later, but by state law, every dismissed municipal court case as of September 1st of 2017 is eligible for sealing, but that's not enough. It's not enough just to know it. I actually am required to advise every single person on the record that that's what they're eligible for. I know it doesn't sound like much, but you start adding a minute to every person, it, it adds up over the course of a day. Juvenile cases, again, not, not only is it automatically sealed as a juvenile case, I have to advise them that their case is going to be automatically sealed. Then we prepare the paperwork to automatically seal every juvenile case and I review it to make sure that it's a, properly within the state law that needs to be sealed. So, I'm signing orders automatically sealing the juvenile records every Wednesday afternoon. The petitions also get filed on Wednes, or they get collected for me and at the end of my docket on Wednesday afternoon, I'm signing orders to seal records. Standing order for compliance with House Bill 171338. This is one that had me whining more than the others. The state law now requires every sheriff anywhere in the state who takes a Commerce City defendant into custody on a warrant has four hours to notify Commerce City that they're holding one of our inmates. If ours is the only hold that person has, we have 48 hours, two business days excluding legal holidays and Sundays, to physically have that person appear in front of us, to address advising them of their rights, advising them of the charge and then addressing bond. If we cannot see them physically within those two days, under state law, they're to be released with a personal recognizance bond. They get out of jail for free. It's really that simple. We have traditionally seen and transported prisoners every Wednesday. Now, we do some on Wednesdays and some on Thursdays because there are these people who we don't wanna have being released on personal recognizance bond, so we're making every effort to try to see them when we can, which is Wednesdays and Thursdays. I was surprised the sheriffs didn't fight this because it puts a tremendous burden on the sheriffs to notify every municipal court anywhere in the state when they take somebody into custody and they have to do it within four hours. There isn't anything really in the state law that clearly says what happens if the sheriff fails to meet their duties. There is consequences if we fail to meet hours of seeing them, that is, the suspect or the defendant gets released on a personal recognizance bond. Yes, I am tracking how many people who are released on a personal recognizance bond continue to fail to appear because for me to issue a warrant for them to start with, that means they've already failed to appear. On a promise to appear, a personal recognizance bond is then a second I promise to appear. Under the state law, if a person has two failures to appear on PR bonds, then they're not supposed to get a third. But, the sheriffs are relying on us to notify them if the person has two prior failures to appear. not supposed to get a third. But the sheriffs are relying on us to notify them if the person has two prior failures to appear. We get the notice in four hours, they need to get our response within forty-eight hours, excluding Sundays and legal holidays. Somebody gets arrested on a Friday, we may not have anybody here who can pull that person's history with our court to see how many prior failures to appear they have before the sheriffs release them on a Monday. During the week, we're pretty good about getting back to everybody. But this particular House bill has created a lot of extra work for my staff. I look at the daily jail reports already. I review these notices that I'm getting from the sheriffs all over the state. For me, it takes just a couple of minutes. I can usually tell by what the person's charged with and what the bond amount is, if they've had prior failures to appear. If I'm uncertain, Monday through Friday, eight to five, I can contact my court staff and get the follow-up information. And then if I determine it's somebody that's okay to release on a PR bond, then I'll tell them not to respond. If it's somebody I need to see right away, we make the arrangements to transport them. If there's somebody who has more than three prior failures to appear, we notify the holding agency not to release them on a PR and that we will arrange transportation. I did not issue the standing order that the American Civil Liberty, American Civil Liberties Union wanted, which was me to order the sheriffs to release people if they're not seen within forty-eight hours. That's what they requested. The state law doesn't require that. They do require me to issue a standing order. The standing order I issued was to the sheriffs. I ordered them to comply with House Bill seventeen thirteen thirty-eight, so that if somebody gets released that I don't want to have released, but I wasn't able to act quickly enough, it's not on me. It's not on our city. It's on the sheriffs for following the state legislature's mandate that these people get released. At some point, I'm sad to say, somebody's going to do something bad who's being released, who probably shouldn't have been released, that's on our state legislature. I don't want it to be on me, my staff, or the city for having that happen. And until something like that happens, this law is the law of the land. We've got to make accommodations to implement it, and we have done so. And we started it right on January first, actually on December thirtieth was when we started to implement our process. I don't have a way of protecting our citizens more because we're not a full-time court. And candidly, we don't have the means to transport people or physically see people five days a week. It just doesn't happen, and it's not likely going to happen. We attempted to do video Skyping, that type of thing, to comply, but the sheriff's departments don't all have that capacity. We use it on a regular basis with Adams County, but we can't do it anywhere else. Not only that, there isn't time to do it other than our designated time with Adams County. Just to give you an example, the Adams County magistrate, they see their prisoners by video advisement every morning, and they have the morning blocked off. They get forty or fifty people a day. So the municipalities, Thornton is like two afternoons a week, I'm Wednesday afternoons. North Glenn, I think, is Monday afternoons. They might share Tuesday afternoons with Thornton. In any event, there's eleven municipalities within the county. We get the afternoons. There isn't a space for Commerce City to see more people more quickly at the Adams County jail. We had tried to transport people from wherever they were being held to Adams County to get them on our video schedule. That's just really different, difficult to accomplish within forty-eight hours. It just is. You know, eventually, we're going to have to come up with Plan B, because I think it's just going to be too hard to continue to implement over the long haul. We're just going to have to arrive at a different solution. And I'll be happy to discuss that during our evaluation, because right now, I don't have a good plan without guidance from the city council on what alternatives they want me to follow. All right, enough of that. Let's go on to the next thing. We had to completely redo our video advisements, our written advisements. I spent, you know, October and November changing our advisements to comply with the law. Compliment, Lynn DeJaco, my court supervisor, she took the first crack. I edited, we revised, we did everything. I think we're in compliance now with all of the revised advisements that we have to give people in writing, every single person. That's in addition to what I have to tell them verbally, but I think that we've got it all taken care of. I haven't had anybody indicate to me that there's something that's been overlooked. All of the municipal judges statewide, as part of the Colorado Municipal Judges Association, we all shared the proposed advisements based on the change. So all of us, you know, cut and paste and came up with, we thought, what was required under the new laws, and I think that we've got it down. Again, whenever we saw something new come in from Lakewood or someplace else, we compared it to what our draft was to see if we had everything we needed to have, and I think we did. Now, in addition to everything else, when I accept a guilty plea to an ordinance violation, I can't just go through my standard advisement. The law now requires me to either have the defendant review a written advisement of the elements of the charge to which they're pleading guilty, or I have to orally advise them of the elements of the charge to which they're pleading guilty. Again, that's not really difficult. We have different attachments to our written advisement of rights that contains the elements of the charges that they're pleading guilty to. But if I'm having to orally advise them or go through that process, again, we're talking, it adds a minute to every single person that I see. For those, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem Teeter has actually sat in a couple of times. I'm sorry, he's not here. But each of you are welcome to come in on Wednesday or Thursday and just watch. You can, we have forty or fifty people in here. You add a minute to everyone else, the person that comes last, just spend an extra hour in my courtroom for something that, to be quite candid, I think it's important everybody knows, but there are ways of getting it done without having to add these extra advisements to every single person that we see. May first is the one that's really going to be a problem for us. In theory, it's not a bad idea to have everyone who's in custody have an attorney with them at the first appearance, but first appearances often are simply advising them of what their rights are, advising them what the charges that they're facing, advising a prisoner of what the maximum possible penalties they're facing, and then asking them if they want to have an attorney appointed to represent them while they're in custody, and then addressing bond and setting a follow-up date. Now, we're not going to be doing that. They're actually, we're going to be required to have an attorney present with every defendant at a first appearance. We're still going to have to do the rest. We're just not going to have to ask them if they want an attorney. An attorney is going to be there. That's going to cost money. It's really that simple. For every person that I see in custody, whether it's here or by video, we will have a public defender present for them, and we're going to have to eat that cost. It's an unfunded mandate. The governor at first promised a million dollars to be put into a pool. Now they're talking two million dollars. We'll have to see ultimately what the state legislature does to fund this, but when you talk about a hundred and thirty different cities, all diving into that pool, I don't know if it's going to be enough to cover all hundred and thirty cities' costs for supplying an attorney at a first appearance for every defendant that's in custody. Again, I'm hopeful that there's going to be enough money set aside, but I'm not anticipating us waiting for that money. We're just going to have to budget it. It's really that simple. Okay, this is the one that's really interesting. There is a piece of pending legislation that's been introduced now where the state legislature is going to prohibit monetary bonding. That means when a person gets arrested, they're going to be released. If they fail to appear and then they get rearrested, they're going to be released. There's not going to be the requirement that they post money to secure their appearance at future court dates. Keep in mind, I'm already not able to hold them for more than forty-eight hours before they get released on a PR bond. This is going to shorten that time even longer. This means if somebody gets arrested after failing to appear, they'll be given a new court date and released, period. If they don't show up the next time, a warrant's going to issue for their arrest. Upon their arrest, they're going to get booked, given a new court date, and released. There is no provision to make anybody post a bond. Obviously, the bond, bondsman's group is going to be fighting this tremendously because that's their livelihood. But municipal courts, I'll be candid, the judges are calling this the "why should I ever show up in municipal court" bill, because if you don't, there are no consequences. Yes, you'll be detained, you'll be advised, given a new date, booked, and released. And that, the way it's written now, there is no cutoff, no two failures to appear, three failures to appear. The process will be, you will get arrested, you will get booked, you'll be given a new court date, you will be released without posting any bond. This is one I'm going to recommend that the city say no to and oppose. All right. I, as a judicial officer, am not directly involved in the legislative process. We each have our roles. I'm the judicial branch. There are some things I would like to see the city council take into consideration. Right now, our current maximum jail sentence is three hundred and sixty-five days. Under federal law, a felony under federal law is defined as any jail sentence of three hundred and sixty-five days or longer. The immigration wave that's going on now, some immigration courts are treating municipal court convictions that carry maximum possible penalties of up to three hundred and sixty-five days as felonies. If you read the language of the federal statute, it doesn't necessarily read in that fashion. However, to eliminate any confusion, I'm going to ask the court to consider reducing the maximum possible jail sentence faced by people convicted of municipal court violations to less than three hundred and sixty-five. Three hundred and sixty-four is logical. I can tell you, for instance, Boulder, maximum jail sentence for their ordinance violation is a hundred and eighty days. It's rare, excuse me, it's rare for me to send anybody to jail for more than six months. Somebody who goes to jail in my court for more than six months has really gone out of their way to earn it. No first offender gets anything like that. A typical jail sentence for this court is twenty days to forty-five days. More than that, it's somebody who has really done something in this community to earn it, and I have done it. I mean, I've sent people to jail for a hundred and eighty days. They worked themselves all the way up to that, and it happens. But reducing the maximum just for the purposes of clarifying that this is not a federal felony or a class-two misdemeanor under state law, it's a municipal sentence, I'd like the city council to consider reducing that. Right now, our advisement page has, we don't send people to jail for traffic offenses. We don't get DUIs, we don't get vehicular homicides, we don't get vehicular assaults. So, you know, the most serious things we get are like the racing cases or speed exhibitions, speed contests, that type of thing. We've gotten a lot of tickets lately for failure to yield to emergency vehicles, things of that nature. I would like to have all of our traffic violations decriminalized. The reason is, the Model Traffic Code, which the city council adopted, has like twelve traffic-related charges that, under the Model Traffic Code, are not decriminalized. So we have an extra full paragraph of the exceptions to the non-jailable traffic violations. I don't see the need to have any of those exceptions, and it would just make it really clear. Traffic cases, you're facing fines, community service, driving classes. Ordinance violations, you're facing, you know, fines, jail, education classes, community service. Make it real clear, nobody goes to jail on traffic day. They don't go to jail now. All I'm doing is asking the city council to memorialize what our current practice is just to eliminate the extra advisements that we have to give and the potential requests for attorneys for jailable offenses, the potential requests for jury trials for some of these traffic offenses, just the ones that are the exceptions under the Model Traffic Code. C, municipal driving under suspension. That's a compromise. There was a bill proposed last year to remove the liens that are placed against driving licenses for failures to pay traffic fines. They wanted to eliminate them. They're called outstanding judgment warrants, OJWs. The legislator that was promoting that was from Broome Field. As a compromise, he removed that provision, taking away the liens for people who are indigent because they don't pay their traffic tickets, to create a driving under suspension, which means if somebody's caught driving after failing to pay a traffic fine, instead of facing the state law driving under suspension because their license is suspended by the Department of Motor Vehicles, for points, it would be a municipal driving under suspension, a four-point violation. Again, that's something that the city attorney would have to vet out for you all in terms of, do you want to do that? The power to do it is already there in the state law. The real question is, do you want to create a distinct driving under suspension in municipal court for points and for failure to pay prior traffic fees? And the failure to pay prior traffic fees and fines isn't just from our court, it's wherever they have failed to pay their traffic ticket at. Finally, the pedestrians on medians. We're seeing that as a growing problem, you know, especially like on Quebec at Fifty-six, where the median is like, my hands are about fourteen inches apart. That's how big that median is there because of the left turn lanes. Highway eighty-five southbound, again, pedestrians that stand in the median doing whatever they're doing, that poses a big safety problem. You know, again, I don't want to wait till somebody gets hurt or somebody reacts and gets into a traffic accident because they're taken by surprise by these people on those medians. I see that as a public safety issue. Again, that's something you all have to decide how you're going to respond to that. I see it as a growing problem in the city. Again, the high-traffic areas are the ones that are real concerns for me. It's even hard for the police to contact those people there because there's no safe way to pull up and contact them and deal with them. I just, again, think it's a public safety issue, but I'd like the city council to consider that in terms of potential legislation. All right, this is what I was talking about. Obviously, Keywood Construction won the contract for the reconstruction of I-70 from Quebec all the way to I-25. They're going to have to put those vehicles somewhere. They're talking about routing them through the frontage roads. That's going to be interesting because that's where the construction crews are going to be setting up. So I don't know how they're going to be able to move that many vehicles along the frontage roads on either side of construction. I can tell you, it's going to increase the traffic on I-270. People are going to be getting off on Quebec, coming north to Fifty-six, going across to Fifty-six, the eighty-five, going south to eighty-five to get past the construction back onto westbound I-70. I don't know that they're going to come the other way to go eastbound, but I can tell you that, I know that that's the way they're going to get going westbound to get around the construction. Right now, Fifty-six and Highway eighty-five is already incredibly dangerous. We're getting incredible numbers of accidents there. You add the added traffic that we anticipate coming off that I-70 construction, I don't have a solution for how this city is going to deal with that increase. I can tell you that I anticipate the number of tickets that we get as a result of the accidents that we get, or people running the red lights at Fifty-six and Highway eighty-five, or speeding on Quebec to make the left turn, running the red light to make the left on Fifty-six of Quebec. I expect all of those to go up, and I expect the police to be doing directed patrol only for public safety purposes, more than for issuing tickets. That's not one I'm looking forward to. And obviously, we know that construction's going to take years. I don't have an answer. I'm just warning you that that's likely going to happen. We do need to update the fee schedule for the courts. The city attorney has proposed some of that. The two that really concern me is the petition to seal record fee. It's already authorized by state statute. It would be a good idea, I think, that it's included in the fee schedule that's adopted for the city, along with the other fees that we already charge. We charge a twenty-dollar court appearance fee. We also have a fuel surcharge that was put into place when fuel spiked dramatically a few years ago, and rather than, you know, add the funds necessary to the police department's budget to cover it, we've continued to maintain the fuel surcharge, even, it's nine dollars on every case, even though the price of gas has gone up and down. You know, again, my view, it's a budget issue, and at least once a week, I get asked by a defendant, you know, why am I paying a fuel surcharge? I try to explain to them that that's required because the city council at the time added it to every case that we did. So at some point, I think, the short-term crisis that was created by the unanticipated increase in gasoline prices for our police department isn't the case anymore. We anymore. We know what the fuel costs are. Maybe taxing it as a fuel surcharge isn't quite the right way to deal with it anymore. But again, that's your decision to make. If you want to leave it there, we'll keep charging it. If you want to put it someplace else, I'm not going to object. It does kind of become, you know, if it's early in the docket, the first person asks. Later in the docket, somebody else will ask. Somebody else will ask after that. It kind of feeds on itself. No formal complaints in 2017. We had a couple of informal ones, just people on the phone weren't happy with not hearing what they wanted to hear, more than, more than anything else. You know, people want to resolve their cases by phone. We don't continue cases over the telephone. We don't let adult defendants have their spouses call or their bosses call and say they can't afford to miss work. The defendant is the only person who can ask for a postponement. For juveniles, parents can do that, but for adults, it's got to be the adult. Those type of complaints, you know, why can't we ask for a postponement by phone? It's just the rules. We don't allow that. I don't think that's going to change. Jury trials, interestingly, I didn't realize that 19 were scheduled and that none actually went. I thought we had one last year. We had one today. So, already in 2018, we're ahead of 2017. So, we schedule about two to three a month. Two a month is probably a normal schedule. Failures to appear happen fairly regularly. Last-minute dispositions happen fairly frequently. We're trying not to inconvenience the citizens of Commerce City too much, but sometimes that happens. Today, we did one. I would expect, well, probably two or three this year. Four is about an average year of actual jury trials that go. And in terms of formal complaints, I can tell you that a couple of years ago, we had morale issues in my department. We no longer have morale issues in my department. Everything, all these people that we've been hiring, they're working out really, really well. I can tell you that the atmosphere in the court department has gotten really positive. You know, Carmen Sanchez, Suzie Martinez, Alma and Michael, the two newest one, we all work together much better as a team. And I think it was, been good that the filings are low in 2017 because it allowed Alma and Mike to kind of come up to speed. And now they're up to speed. So, they're ready to tackle the bigger dockets now. That's the state of the court for 2017.
Great. Thanks, Judge.
Thank you, Judge. Couple comments. I want to go to questions, comments from the council. Does anybody have any comments on the state of the courts? I have a couple items I want to bring up. One, I know we were pursuing an ordinance, I believe we had passed an ordinance on pedestrians in the median.
There was a study session in the fall concerning that ordinance. There was some additional information gathering within the city, and that will be being updated and being forwarded to you for consideration shortly.
Okay. Can we make sure that we at least touch on the other items the judge mentioned in a study session for consideration from the council? Lowering the 465 days to 464, that shortlist that he had?
Absolutely. We'll put some information together.
Have some discussion on that.
Sure.
And then, the I-70 impact. You know, I serve on NADA with Mr. Teeter, also part of Metro Mayor's caucus. We're constantly talking to the state. I talked to Tony DeVito just a week ago. And a big concern of mine is that we're going to be overly impacted when I-70 goes under construction. And we know 270 is not going to get more traffic because it functions perfectly as a parking lot the way it is today.
It does.
It'll continue to function perfectly as a parking lot until CDOT spends some money and fixes 270. But we, I also believe 56th Avenue, 60th Avenue, 64th and even 72nd, Quebec and Highway 85 are going to have major impacts. We already know that people are circumventing some of that traffic without construction, coming down Central Park Boulevard, wrapping around this building and on out because of just daytime numbers of traffic. So, we know when it, when it does happen, it's supposed to get worse. I talked to Tony about it. Part of what they're saying is, they have to keep, as many lanes are open today, open throughout the construction process, which is going to be an amazing feat for them to be able to do that. However, even if they can keep that many lanes open, we know it's going to be slowed down and people are going to try to avoid it. We're going to try to get through that the best we can. And we know that we're going to rely upon the chief and the police department to help try to keep us up to speed on where we're having those impacts and what we need to do from a legislative piece, working with other entities. But otherwise, I'm glad to see the court doing as well as it's doing, glad that the morale's up. I have been to several of your court sessions, not any in the last couple of years. I don't like to sit back there and make everybody nervous, but I do like to see every once in a while. And thank God I haven't been here to watch my kids go through your court lately.
There you go.
And that, that's always an experience for me because then I have to sit back there and watch my kids deal with you sitting down there, punishments. We will be having your evaluation later this evening. And one of the things that I think is important to bring up is the new legislation that's coming down the pike. We just had our legislative meeting, our legislative group had met before our council meeting tonight. We talked about the new legislation that you mentioned. And we took a stand of oppose and monitor, monitor. Oppose slash monitor. Now, we can move that to strongly oppose or to monitor. And it's some of the, I want the council to engage in a discussion, to know where we need to stand. Because over the last few years, I know a lot of tools have been taken away from municipal courts on being able to put a punishment equal to the crime for you to be able to control the behavior that happens within this community by being able to have the ability to set down certain punishments to defer people from acting in inappropriate ways. So, we'll have that discussion when we do the evaluation later this evening. I don't see anybody else's lights on, but I appreciate you coming in and giving us a state of the court and look forward to seeing you later this evening for your evaluation process.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, we're going to have the fourth quarter capital program update. I'd like KICAT co-chairs both to come forward and give their presentation.
Good evening again, Mayor, council members, citizens and guests. My name is Susan Carvahal, and I am co-chair of the Capital Improvement Program Citizens Advisory Committee, also known as KICAT. Our mission is to advise the city and inform the community about capital improvement projects. The last quarter has once more flown by with projects moving quickly. We've completed the widening of Tower Road, and Highway 2 is getting closer to completion. Eagle Point Rec Center kickoff was, what I understand, a smashing success. It sounds like you had a great deal of fun. They did a great demonstration of demolition on the wall, I guess. And I'm so sorry I missed it. Bison Ridge Rec Center structure is rapidly moving strong along, and I'm excited to do another hard hat tour with staff and council soon.
Susan?
Yes.
At the Bison, at the Eagle Point?
Yes.
There were hammers flying everywhere. Sledgehammers literally flying everywhere.
I'm sorry I missed it.
Sorry about that. I couldn't let that pass. Matter of fact, McBroom almost got hit by a flying hammer.
Who was going to hitting?
Just one, one flying hammer.
Well, it had to be fun, whatever. I'm glad nobody got hurt. Now, I lost my place, see?
See that? See what I did? You were talking about Bison Ridge.
Bison Ridge, okay. After the hard hat tour that's coming up, I'm looking forward to that. The recreation center projects are really becoming a reality. And it's wonderful that Commerce City uses the input from the community and advisory committees to help with the design and programming, not to mention the new names. I would, I'm personally going to mention this because I think that anyone who's interested in, you know, what's happening over at the renovation at the Eagle Point, to stop by the lobby and look at, they have a beautiful display and a hands-on view of the materials, the colors and the designs that the renovation is going to be using. I was really very pleased to see that. That was really very educational for me because I've been looking at paper, and this stuff is the real stuff that's up there. So, I'm really glad that they're doing that. Everything's happening so fast, and I can't believe that our five years is coming to an end here this year. It's been fascinating. It's been wonderful to watch all these projects come together. I am very proud of council and this city for staying on track and on budget with this five-year program. It's absolutely amazing. And kudos to all of you. But as a citizen, I'd like to take a minute just to commend and thank all of our construction and design and program management for the outstanding work they have done up to this point. It's been really remarkable. With that said, I'd like to turn this over to our program management, Scott, who will fill us in on the details of all the projects.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council, and especially welcome to the new members of city council. We're pleased to be here tonight to present the end of year four of the program status. So, this is actually the 16th installment of quarterly updates we've done for this program. As Susan just mentioned, we're rapidly approaching, but we're not quite there yet at the end of the five years, but we've got some good news to share with you. On behalf of the city management team and the colleagues in Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and the other city departments, one of the things we've shared in the past is that this has been a true team sport. Virtually every department in the city of Commerce City has touched this bond program in some way, shape or form. The team in Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Human Resources, IT, the Clerk and Recorder's Office, Government Affairs and Communications, virtually every single one of those groups has been involved. They all had day jobs prior to this bond program starting, and they have all worked immensely hard to deliver this program. So, I just wanted to put an exclamation point on what Susan just said about the work that's been going on. It's very impressive. Very quickly, just to some 2K background for council members and those who may be watching on TV, the program, the bond, was approved in November of 2013. They committed to five projects in five years. The goals and objectives were to build high-quality facilities and to lower long-term maintenance costs, spend taxpayer dollars wisely and transparently, and complete the projects on time. First, this is all funded with 2K tax revenue, and you can see the summary chart in front of you. I'll focus your eyes down in the bottom left-hand corner for a moment. You can see that we had anticipated roughly 11.5 million in revenues coming in through this vehicle during the course of the year. As of the end of November of 2017, $13 million had been received. So, the funding received has been ahead of the current plan. In terms of the expenditures over time, you can see what the revenue and expenses are by the blue and gold bars and the fund balance that's available is represented by that green bar. That green bar is going to be used to pay for longer-term operations and maintenance costs of that facilities. So, that fund balance will go down as planned over time. This is a copy of the executive summary that's produced on a monthly basis for the program. It includes all the elements that I just reviewed, including the revenue. It shows the total status of the budget, commitment and expenditures across all of the different projects. It shows the progress against our phases on the bottom left-hand corner and just a narrative status. These reports are available going back through the end of 2013, sorry, end of 2014. On the overall schedule, as Susan mentioned, we're at the end of year four right now. You can see there's two projects left with chav, the gold diamonds out in front of us. We're anticipating the completion of the new recreation center, Bison Ridge, in late spring of this year. And the existing rec center, as Susan indicated, groundbreaking has occurred, and that project is scheduled for completion at the end of 2018. Oops, sorry. This is a representation of the amount of work that's gone on over the life of the bond program. You can see that large hump right in the middle is representative of the work that has been underway on the new recreation center, the design of the existing recreation center, and the work on Tower Road. So, you can see that we're past that curve from a construction standpoint, but there's still a lot of work to do to stand up and open the new facility, mobilize the staff. The small hump that you see on the right-hand side represents the existing recreation center work. Likewise, on the CIP front, you can see that there's two projects that are under construction right now. You look at the Phase 5 Highway 2 widening is anticipated to complete in spring 2018, and the NRDS Project Sand Creek is under construction right now. The highlights on the 2K program for Q4 of 17, the Bison Ridge Rec Center furniture contract was approved, the RFP for the Bison Ridge Rec Center exercise equipment was issued, and Eagle Point's guaranteed maximum price contract for the foundations project that served as the basis for the groundbreaking was also issued in Q4. From a design standpoint, the Eagle Point Recreation Center additions and renovation, final design package was completed. And in construction, Bison Ridge Recreation Center construction is well underway, and Jennifer will have some good news to present on that at the end of this presentation. From a construction standpoint, substantial completion of the Bison Ridge Rec Center roadway infrastructure are completed in Q4 of 17, and that, that infrastructure is now open to the traveling public. Also, the Eagle Point Rec Center additions renovation construction actually began, and so, there's a lot of dirt that's been moving very rapidly out there with the utility relocations and the foundations. Substantial completion of Tower Road and all four lanes of traffic are now open to the traveling public was a major milestone. And from a contracting standpoint, the IGA negotiations with the city and county Denver and Denver International Airport for the Tower Pena ramp was finalized. The construction and construction management services contracts for that same project, the Tower Pena ramp, was also completed. The Tower Pena ramp project plans were also issued for construction. So, there was a lot of activity on both the bond and CIP front in Q4. Highway 2 continued construction. Completion is planned for spring of 2018. We also completed the 2017 asphalt mill and overlay, and the Tower Pena ramp project began construction, and that's the groundbreaking that you see there. Looking ahead for the Q1 of 2018 for the 2K project, design of the 2K project is now completed, so that's a major milestone. We are fully into implementation and delivery mode. From a contracting and procurement standpoint, the construction GMP contract for Eagle Point Recreation Center, amendment number one for the long lead items and amendment number two for the final GMP have both been presented to and passed by city council. The Bison Ridge Rec Center exercise equipment contracts are underway, and the Bison Ridge FFNE procurement is underway. From a construction standpoint, Eagle Point Rec Center utility relocations, excavation and start of interior construction will commence, and the Bison Ridge Rec Center area interior construction is also underway. From a CIP standpoint, the design of the RTD North Metro and the Rightaway acquisition is still in process, and construction of Highway 2 construction and the Tower Pena ramp construction will be ongoing. That is the presentation for 2017, as well as the look ahead for Q1 of 2018. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have. And when that's completed, we'll ask Jennifer to come back up and go through the progress at the Bison Ridge Recreation Center. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Hughesman.
Thank you. You keep saying spring. You keep saying late spring. Can you further define that for us? Because people have a different definition of spring.
They do. And I won't go through the technical definition of what spring is. What we're doing is, we're trying to make sure we're clear- What we're doing is we're trying to make sure we're clear on expectations. There are contract completion dates that are scheduled, but we also know in front of us that March is the snowiest month of the year, and two, three years ago, we had the wettest May on record. So we're holding the schedule to make sure, and we have weather days allowed for in the contract, so we'll be getting more specificity as we move to the end of Q1 on those specific dates.
So does that mean we can expect June? I mean...
For, for the recreation center, for the new recreation center, the construction completion dates are in middle of May, sorry, middle of April through early May, subject to the weather. That's the construction contract. The recreation center team will then be mobilizing their operations and doing testing and training for about four to six weeks. So that's our current schedule, Councilman, and then we'll be watching the weather very, very closely to affirm the final opening dates for the facility.
And as far as Highway Two goes?
Highway Two is also weather-dependent as well. The current substantial completion date of the contract is April of 2018, but subject to weather and also subject to any final landscaping that can't occur until we get past the winter, winter months.
All right. Well, despite what Punxsutawney Phil says, doesn't look like we've had much winter out there, so I would think that we should be taking advantage of that time now as opposed to watching cones go set idle and no construction taking place.
And the work is going as exactly as planned for right now. It may not look like that, but there are improvements going on. If you're referring, Councilman, to Highway Two, there is work going on that will help to further that project along.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Scott, for your presentation. I had a question about those delineator lights on Highway Two down by 96. Are those still planned to be put in the road?
Maria, I'm looking at my colleague in Public Works who says yes, those components are planned to be implemented.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I was actually thinking rec center, late March, early April. I just wanted to see if I could get anybody to, to lose it out there. I know we're coming along. It's, it's, it's exciting. We're all anticipating these openings, and we're, we're excited, but I could tell you the construction on Highway Two should be ahead of schedule based on the weather we've had, so I do know actually property acquisitions and things like that have held us up, but we're, we're anticipating those openings and excited. I know our residents are ready to see the cones go away as well.
Absolutely, and I think as we offered at the very beginning of that project is that the orange cones represent not only, we asked for everybody's patience while the progress was being achieved, and the only way you can get theirs is through those orange cones, but we fully understand and appreciate the comments. We're all looking forward to wrapping that project up very quickly.
Absolutely.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. If, if I might, I would like to invite Jennifer to come back up and go through the great progress on Bison Ridge.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and city manager just reminded me, we have had some XL and United Power electrical issues along the stretch of Highway Two. In order to be able to activate the road openings, we haven't had the benefit of the utility company's mobilization to get out and complete that power work. So that's part and parcel to some of the status as to where we are right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Jennifer?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
2018 is off to a great start with the final two ballot 2K projects, plus Highway Two in construction and, in construction and is set to be completed by the end of the year. Highway Two is expected to complete in the early spring, followed by Bison Ridge Recreation Center in late spring, and Eagle Point Recreation Center this winter. Commerce City has completed so much since the 2013 vote. To reveal some of last quarter's progress, we'd like to show you the latest construction of the new recreation center. Here's a wonderful time-lapse video to show what's happening in the last few months.
We look forward to those openings. All right. Mr. McBroom, give us the fourth quarter work plan update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my privilege to provide some introductory remarks to our update on the fourth quarter results of implementing the city's administrative work plan. Because it's the fourth quarter update, we will also be including some year-end numbers, and it's a great opportunity to recognize tremendous effort on behalf of city staff. I appreciate the mayor providing some recognition to city staff earlier. It truly is a reflection of tremendous effort on behalf of city staff in furtherance of city council's goals. So tonight, we are going to share a bit of an overview of the city's strategic planning process, but most of the presentation will focus on fourth quarter and year-end results towards implementing the city's 2017 administrative work plan. As always, the administrative work plan begins with strong adherence to city council's goals for the future of the Commerce City community. Everything in the city's work plan and all of the accomplishments and data that we'll share from work that occurred in 2017 lines back up to one of these five city council goals. It's an extremely important component of the administrative work plan, and it's key that the community understand that city council really drives results within the organization. Our effort has to be aimed towards obtaining results. Effort alone doesn't get us those results. It's making sure that we're thoughtful about the work that we're going to do, why we're doing it, and what we hope to accomplish with the work that we're doing. This is part of the city's overall strategic planning effort. We'll be sharing results tonight of the fourth quarter and the whole year for 2017. Work began on the 2017 work plan with city council's retreat in early 2016. So we're sharing results tonight of 2017 year-end. We're already in the process of executing the 2018 work plan. Work on the 2018 work plan began with city council's retreat in January of 2017, and work is already beginning to begin to pull together priorities and help city council with a planning retreat at the end of this month that really starts the strategic planning process for the 2019 work plan and the 2019 budget. The city's work plan is divided into five levels. That top level are those five city council goals that I showed on the prior slide. So the work plan begins with those five city council goals, and then we begin to break the work down into smaller and smaller pieces. Those five city council goals are divided into 20 outcome focus areas. Those 20 outcome focus areas are then divided into 103 objectives. Those objectives are the first level of the plan where we have measurable results, and a lot of what Deputy City Manager Troy Smith will be sharing tonight will be measures that are assigned with those 103 objectives at that level of the work plan. Internally, we take those 103 objectives and divide those into, what was the number? 200 and, 283 separate strategies that line up to those 103 objectives, and those strategies are further broken down into 643 tactics. So the plan has a tremendous amount of detail, and it's not only useful for demonstrating how we will accomplish city council goals, but it's also useful internally within the organization for employees to understand why the work they do is important. Everything that we do has a purpose, and I think it's important for city employees to understand how the hard work they put in on a daily basis adds value. It truly does help city council, city council accomplish its goals for the future of the Commerce City community. So with that, to share some of those results, I'll turn it over to Troy.
Good evening. To follow up on that strategic planning cycle that Mr. McBroom just mentioned, city council will hold its 2018 city council retreat on February 23rd and 24th, right here at City Hall. The agenda for that will include the identification of 2019 priorities and capital improvement projects that will drive the construction of the 2019 annual work plan and ultimately the 2019 annual budget. So in 2016, the council retreat was conducted on January 23rd, and these five items were identified by then-city council as their priority focus areas for the year 2017. In addition to that, the 2K projects finishing on time and within budget were not listed on the slide during that retreat, but I can tell you took a great deal of the council's focus and discussion and was certainly a priority articulated to staff. So what we're going to do now is just walk through the accomplishments made and the progress made on those five focus areas that council gave to staff for 2017. And one of those was senior housing and to add 30 new senior units to the community by January 31st of 2019. So this is a multi-year project, and community development and the Housing Authority continue to work to evaluate senior housing opportunities for the land that the senior, that the Housing Authority owns at Conner States and is also working with Regen LLC for possible senior housing units at the Mile High Greyhound Park. We had an objective related to the Irondale Neighborhood Plan on the previous slide. This was the to-be-determined economic development project. Ultimately, this is what council had selected. As council knows, this project is well underway at this point in time. The consultant has proposed two scenarios for the future vision of the Irondale area and is in the process of vetting those scenarios through a second round of both community and council meetings. This project initially was delayed in its implementation, and so when you look into the work plan document for Q4, this project shows disruption as a result of that delayed start, but is well on track, and the new deadline for completion or estimated completion date is in the second quarter of 2018. Grade separated Highway 85 and 120th Avenue intersection, Weld County, Adams County, and CDOT submitted for a federal grant during 2017 for this project, and we'll still wait to see the results of that submission, and the staff and council have identified $7 million in funding to contribute to that project in the event that it is funded. Competitive youth sports fields were also one of the priorities. That progress is, that project is progressing on track, and a council update is in fact planned for the second quarter of 2018. And you just got a 2K update, but I'm happy to report that those projects are on schedule and within budget for the 2K initiative. Police Department assessment and reform was a priority for city council in 2017. The city council requested the assistance of the Department of Justice through a process called Collaborative Reform, and as you are well aware, that program has been suspended, is no longer in operation, and the city will not be receiving a final report with a series of recommendations for reform in the department. However, the Police Department and the Department of Justice are working together under a new agreement for technical assistance to identify and adopt best practices. Other measures in this area that indicate some real positive movement for the Police Department include employee policy violation reduction by 22%, and the Victim Services Unit is responding in the field 4% more to victims' rights ex-crime. Just some general highlights out of the fourth quarter work plan. We added 216 available, or affordable, housing units in 2017, and 545,336 square feet of industrial warehouse distribution space to the community during the year. 68 new companies located at Commerce City in 2017. The community has six new restaurants and one new hotel, and internally, we achieved a 32% reduction in workman's compensation claims. Some additional highlights, council should know that while there were some disputes filed with respect to tax findings, there were no tax hearings held in 2017. All those disputes were successfully resolved without the need for a hearing. We reduced traffic crashes involving city-owned vehicles by 18%. Our technology infrastructure across the city among all of its facilities was 99.78%. Audit collections as of December 31st were $2.8 million, and 14,942 residential properties were inspected as part of the Clean Commerce City RC3 program. Some additional highlights, city council authorized the purchase of about $6.5 million of Foray Water in partnership with the Water District. 99% of the Q4 social media posts reached over 500 individuals, and the city had 22 open positions among the 11 council-appointed boards, commissions, and committees, which represents a 17% vacancy rate over the year. You all are going through the interview processes now for filling those positions. And finally, city council adopted a five-year capital improvement and preservation program during 2017. Final round of highlights here for you. The REM project, or Records Information Management project, has experienced some disruption, resulting in delays to the completion of that timeline. The project will now be led by an internal team during the course of 2018. Participation in parks, recreation, and golf programs and services increased 6.4% in 2017. And finally, the city was awarded a $700,000 grant to develop a combined sexual assault task force with the Commerce City Police Department and the Brighton Police Department, furthering those cooperative efforts. The Q4 report contains those and many additional accomplishments during the fourth quarter and really all of the year of 2017. It has been uploaded in city council's packet and will be available to the public on the website sometime later this week. I should note that within the last two weeks, the work plan was placed under the city council's webpage and is available for public viewing. I would now answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Douglas?
I didn't have that in mind on there, but since I'm called upon here, I'm gonna take this opportunity. Thank you, Troy, for your presentation. I understand under the restaurants, it said things are accomplished, six, and then a new hotel. Are these things that were in the works or actually completed? Because I know we, we're having a hotel come in, but it's not yet open.
Yes, that's correct. They're anticipating rooms being opened sometime during the course of this year, but the hotel started under construction at I-76 and 88th Avenue.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Does any of the other council members have questions, comments concerning the work plan update? Seeing none, thank you both. All right. All right. Administrative council business. We do have additional council appointments we need to make. We have the appointment of members to both the Adams County Water Quality Association and the Sand Creek Regional Greenway. Anybody want to step up to serve on either of those organizations? Don't all raise your hand at one time. Nobody? How often does the Water Quality Association meet? Brian?
Very rarely, only when there's a need to meet. So if somebody were willing to serve, it's not going to be much of a time commitment. In the case of the Sand Creek Regional Greenway, that additional appointment need not be a council member. City council does not have to appoint anybody at all, but if you would like to, we could either fill that with a staff position or a member of the community.
All right, now that we have a little more information. Mr. Huesman, you have an interest?
I'll take the Adco.
The Adams County Water Quality Association, Mr. Huesman, has stepped up, and we thank him. Now I need somebody for Sand Creek. Anybody? Bueller? Bueller? Somebody? I guess we don't have to have anybody for Sand Creek then, so we'll hold off on that appointment. If somebody changes their mind, get with Brian, and we'll get it put down. All right? That takes care of that.
Mr. Ford?
Yes, ma'am.
May I, for the record, have a motion and a second for the...
I need a motion to make Mr. Huesman the member for Adams County Water Quality. Apollo?
Sure. Motion to appoint Councilman Huesman to the Adco Water Quality Advisory.
Thank you. Oscar?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, and you don't get a vote because you're the appointee. All right. Any other additional administrative council business for this evening? Seeing none? Mr. Huesman?
We spent Saturday interviewing people for the boards and commissions. Would like to thank all the residents that have applied for that and spent some time on Saturday to come out and see our smiling faces and answer questions for us. What I really want to say, though, is after that, I took my wife and daughter out to dinner at the Bison Grill, and first time in a long time that we've been out there for dinner just on ourselves and had that smoked prime rib that they offer. And want to thank the staff out there for the tremendous work that they do, for providing a service to those people up in the northern range that don't have a lot of options for dining, and also encourage the residents, if you haven't been to the Bison Grill recently, you owe yourself to go check it out, especially on a Saturday night for that prime rib. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for that. Any other administrative council business? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you. We had our interviews over the weekend, and there was a few suggestions that we want to bring forward. And maybe we could do this in a study session. I'm sure we can do that in March, but sometime soon of some of the things that we need to improve on, we've heard from some of the applicants that had prior experience on the board and some difficulty they've had. But with her was one particular subject was in on the planning commission, receiving electronic documents and the size of them. Sometimes they didn't come through, and maybe we could use the Dropbox in order to facilitate those extra-large files. But if we could have a study session just to go over some of those items that we could improve with some of these boards, it'd be helpful.
All right. Thank you for that. Mr. Wadiola?
A couple things. We went with the youth commission, and our youth went to the Cherry Creek Diversity Conference this Saturday, so they're going to come back next meeting and give us highlights about it. Also, they're going to start planning a conference here in Commerce City for next fall, and they're taking the lead on that. And then piggybacking off what Steve, Mr. Douglas, said, is I have a list that I typed up, Brian, and I could send it out of just some of the things that the committee on Saturday jotted down on some of the concerns, so you guys know. So I'll email that to you.
All right. Any other administrative council business? Moving on. Reports. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did send out the city manager update tonight. The updates in tonight's report includes the Quarterly Economic Indicators Report. We also provided some information on the two special district elections. Both the Water District and the Fire District are having elections May 8th, so there's some information on how voters can learn more about those two elections. We also have an update on the Landlord Recruitment Fund, information that the mayor provided to us through the Metro Mayor's Caucus. And then we have the legislative report and the elected officials briefing attached as correspondence along with the city council work schedule. So as always, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Robert?
I don't have anything additional to report tonight.
No additional. I'm going to start off by thanking our police department, our chief. With the situation with the Adams County deputy being shot, being stepping up and making sure we're there to back up our sister community of Adams County, to take calls and cover, and everything else, I think is admirable. And I have heard nothing but good things from the commissioners and the sheriff for how that has worked out, and praise for the departments that did step up. So thank you, Chief. We had our Brighton City Council reception, several ACC meetings, and it seems like there's one or two a week. But we're gaining ground, it looks like. Rotary, ACED Executive Committee Meeting, Rotary, Metro Mayor's Commissioners Retreat or Metro Mayor's Caucus Retreat, Water Commission Meeting, SPC Meeting, ACC Meeting, Area Boards Meeting. Area Boards is something I think every new council member or even any existing or those who have been here for a while, if you haven't been to an Area Boards Meeting, it's something you should go to at least once. You should at least once participate in an Area Boards. That's where we have Fire District, School District, Tri-County Health, The Refuge. There's multiple community health services, multiple entities within our community. All the leaders come together, and we talk about all the efforts that are being made by each entity within the city. So if you can make it to one of those great... Rotary again, Northern Area Transportation Authority Meeting, Commerce City Badge and Honor Ceremony. Thank you again, Chief. Great event, and a little perplexed, beans that it was in Brighton, but after understanding why, I'm thankful that at the end of March, we'll have the opening of our new rec center. I know I'm pushing that. I know it's not going to be the end of March, but I'm trying to push so we know that the next Badge and Honor Ceremony will be held at the rec center, so we'll be grateful for that. Metro North Chamber Annual Gala, most of the council was there. Eagle Point Recreation Center Innovation Groundbreaking, most of us was there as well. Joint Dinner at Adams County School District 14 and the City Council. I called in sick. My mayor pro tem handled that for me, and I understand it was worth being sick for. So I'm glad I stayed home. Rotary. And then Thursday, I had a meeting that is not normal for me. I got a call and was asked to show up for a meet and greet. I asked Robert Cheesely to attend that meeting with me because I know there are lease agreements and things of that nature being drafted. The company was a company called Extraction. Didn't know who they were, didn't know anything about them. Robert did go with me to lunch, and we met with them. In general, it was just a meet and greet. They have ideas of being active in some way or another in our community and basically went over the fact that they need to communicate with our residents, they need to communicate with the city, and they need to try to do things in the most positive manner that they can. But we did not overstep any bounds of talking about any contractual matters or anything of that nature. So I think it was a good meeting to have, but I wanted to make the council aware of it so that nobody thinks that I'm out meeting with companies like Extraction without your knowledge. So that's the end of my report for tonight. If anybody has anything they want to add, now is the time to do so. Steve?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Last week, I attended the homeless roundup for a community center, and I'm sorry, Community Reach. And it was an effort with Community Reach, Adams County Police, Commerce City Police, and to take account of our homelessness in Commerce City and in the county as well. And this was an effort across the country, and I didn't realize, just on this count here, we are running as far as receiving federal dollars for the state for the homelessness plan, states like New York, California. And just to hear who we cannot count was interesting because if you're homeless and you're couch surfing on a friend's couch, that doesn't count. If you're homeless and you pay for housing facility, I mean, a hotel facility for the night, that doesn't count. It's only if you're offered a voucher and you go to a hotel, that's when it counts. And then some folks just didn't want to take in the count. Over at Community Reach, they had dental services. There was a physician over there to check people out who came in. There was food that was offered there, blankets, sleeping bags, coats, gloves, you name it. Those services were offered, but just wanted to thank everyone who participated in that.
Anyone else have anything to add to my report? Seeing none? All right, we're moving on to next item. We have an executive session scheduled for tonight. I'm hoping for a motion and a second to enter into an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, Parents F, Parents L, for the discussion of the evaluation of the municipal court judge. Councilwoman Frank? No, you can just say so moved. All right. Mr. Oscar Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session for the reasons stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're currently in executive session. Back there.